Mayor, we're good to go when you are.
Okay, thank you. I will call to order and welcome everyone to the April 11th Board of Alderman Meeting. And I would ask everyone to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Thank you very much. I would ask the City Clerk to do a roll call for attendance, please.
Alderman Allen?
Here.
Alderman Even?
Here.
Alderman Holman?
Here.
Alderman Hughes?
Here.
Alderman Mortland?
Here.
Alderman Perrow?
Here.
Alderman Weisehan?
Here.
And Alderman Whitmire?
Here.
Mayor Remus presiding, and we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Relative to the minutes from the March 28 meeting, I seek a motion and second to approve.
So wait on me.
Second, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't here.
Fair enough, thank you. Any discussion or amendment?
I second the abstaining since I was not present as well.
Got it.
Thank you, got it? Any other discussion or amendment? All in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I do have a notice that we have a couple of citizens that would like to speak. As our standard, which we do, and I think most municipalities, happy to have any of our residents come and speak. And each speaker, as they know, gets three minutes to address the board. Although we just go in alphabetical order, would ask Mr. Bolazina if he would want to come up and speak.
Well, I'm just gonna speak during the presentation as a person.
Okay, well, we can...
That's fine, after we second read it, if you want to recognize public at that point, you can.
Fine, all right, thank you. All right then, we'll get to that then, ongoing on to public hearings. Public hearing to review request from Frank Burkey, owner, for approval of conditional use permit for a pergola to be located at 824 Ambersham Drive in the suburban estate zoning district. I now declare the public hearing open, and would ask the City Clerk to enter exhibits.
Exhibit number one is affidavit of publication of notice of hearing, published in the St. Louis County on March 25, 2022. Exhibit number two is typewritten notice of hearing, posted at the municipal center, on the city's website, on the subject property, and mailed to property owners within 300 feet with a list of those owners attached. And exhibit number three is bill number 2224.
Thank you very much. I know Mr. Murphy is here, is Christina Noren Schout here also?
No, she's not.
Okay, but as I said, Mr. Murphy's here, are there any questions of the staff or any discussion? Alderman Holman.
Thank you, Mayor, I would just like to highlight on the plan for the site plan for the adjacent residential properties, our city staff has put support on all adjacent properties next to this property. And one, I appreciate that a lot for the public record and appreciate you doing that going forward whenever there's support to adjacent properties on the development plan. So I just want to highlight that for our board as well.
Thank you. Any other? Is there any member of the public that wish to comment? Okay, thank you, I now declare the public hearing closed. Second public hearing, a public hearing to review request from Captain Morel, owner, for approval of a conditional use permit for residential driveway gate to be located at 2019 South Mason Road in suburban estate zoning district. I now declare the public hearing open, would ask the City Clerk to enter exhibits.
Exhibit number one is affidavit of publication of notice of hearing, published in the St. Louis County on March 25, 2022. Exhibit number two is typewritten notice of hearing, posted at the municipal center, on the city's website, on the subject property, and mailed to property owners within 300 feet with a list of those owners attached. And exhibit number three is bill number 2225.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Morel is here to answer questions, thank you. Are there any questions of the staff or any discussion? Have there any members of the public that wish to comment? I now declare the public hearing closed. At this point, I would recognize the Commission Chairman and recognize the Board's opportunity to provide recourse. Alderman Weisehan.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Monday, the Parks and Trails Commission had a playground open house for the Longview Playground. We had a good turnout, and I would encourage anybody that still has some input that they'd like to see, to check out the town, the main website of Town and Country, and click on the survey online.
Thank you. Alderman Mortland, you were next.
I'd just like to just basically show our appreciation to our West County Dispatch Center dispatchers and its National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. We have 17 dispatchers full-time with a general manager and supervisor. They're all part of our public safety. And sometimes just over the phone and invisible, we've all, as a board, been there and gone through it. And we just want to show our appreciation for them and say thank you.
Well said, I know in the city, there's been time, and there's been quite a long wait on 9/11 recalls and things. So we sort of take it for granted, but they do a great job, so thanks for bringing that up. Alderman Holman, I think you were next.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd just like to inform the community that Public Works Commission will hold its next meeting on Monday, April 18th at 6:30, which is a new time for the time slot for us. Historically, we've been meeting at 7:00, but in 2022, we've been meeting at 6:30 for the community if they'd like to join. And it will be here at the municipal building. Thank you.
Alderman Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. The task force for the tribute for veterans and first responders had a meeting this afternoon. We were shown four potential plans. We, as a group, will on Thursday be walking around town square to really be able to see the lay of the land, to try to apply this information. And then we'll have our next official meeting the week of May the 9th. So we continue to work to move forward very quickly. Also, the Ways and Means Commission will be having a... Softer. We will schedule the Ways and Means meeting in the next two weeks, I believe. Joe Alton and Javory will be concluding the financial audit this week, so that will be forthcoming.
What was your group's overall impression of the initial presentation?
It was interesting, and it was...
Sure, that's the word I wanted to hear.
It's not the word?
I'm just kidding.
It was good, it was a different perspective. It was looking at a slightly larger area, but fortunately, we have former Alderman Mayor and Alderman Manch there. And, you know, Ms. Nixon and some of the individuals who were part of the town square. I shouldn't say drama, town square projects. And so we're working to keep all of those previously identified concerns in mind as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Shelton, do you have?
No report, no.
And Anne, do you want to talk for a second, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been asked to give a report on sponsorships for the year for events, upcoming events. We have two sponsors, so our concert series is sponsored in full. And then, as well as our turkey trot is fully sponsored. Two programs, we've switched over for the lack of sponsorship to a registration basis. So the mountain bike clinics and the Town and Country Camp Out will be registration-based. We have our outdoor movie night that is currently unsponsored. So if we can get a sponsor by the end of April, we could still pull that off in June. And if not, I'll continue looking for sponsorships, and hopefully, we can reschedule that for the fall. Some of the further out in the year events include E-Side Laying, Fall Fire and Ice, Holiday Boutique, and Photos with Santa, which are unsponsored at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And before we start unfinished business, my favorite topic, Michael, how's Shopping Road going?
We're awaiting delivery of some custom-made devices. They were not ordered by the previous contractor, so they're ordered by this new contractor. And they're drainage devices, and they weren't able to do any work last week. So, but they are ahead of schedule, which is the good point.
I'd probably ask every meeting just to sort of get an update. Hopefully, whatever they've ordered for the drainage will be in soon.
Yes, sir.
Thanks very much, thanks for the report. All right, unfinished business number one, bill number 22-15. This is sponsored by Alderman, Mortland, and Whitmire, without objection, will the City Clerk read the bill for the second time?
Bill number 2215 is an ordinance approving the third amended final site development plan for the development known as Town and Country Crossing, located at 1,000 to 1,272 Town and Country Crossing Drive, with conditions to be complied with and authorizing certification of the amended final site development plan.
Thank you, I seek a motion to approve.
Somebody?
Second.
Thank you. In terms of discussion, can we, I think it'd be reasonable to go to the citizens who want to speak on that now. Mr. Bolazina.
Thank you, I don't know if they're gonna have any, you know, new presentation or slides or what they're gonna do, but it doesn't matter. So, but thank you, I know a few people here, I've served on your position, and I've been on the planning and zoning for probably 20 years. So it's unusual for me to come after we've done our job on planning and zoning to reiterate what we did in planning and zoning. But we did, with a large majority, were opposed to this development, and I'm just gonna reiterate that. Some of the points that were raised during the planning and zoning meeting, I know you all don't necessarily go on YouTube to watch us, even though it's great, great video. So anyway, the original ordinance on this property was subject to really strict scrutiny and negotiation between the city and the original developer. And the approval of the development was marked by long discussions, threats, lawsuits. It was really a very difficult approval process. And at the time, even the adjacent subdivisions started lawsuits against this development. And that, I just want to paint the picture that it was, we entered into really hard discussions about what this development should be. Some of the current Alderman may not know that the original property was Western Electric, it was a factory, basically. It became part of AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T spun it off, became Lucian Properties, Lucian Properties was divested by AT&amp;T, and then it was sold. And when it was sold, it sat there for a while, and it sat there for a while until an investor picked it up. The entire site was zoned under a St. Louis County ordinance at the time. We annexed the area, Town and Country annexed the area, and we had to assume whatever zoning it had on the St. Louis County, and that was commercial zone. When the proposal came true, I think it was 2005 or so, we learned that the property wanted to be redeveloped. The city was very concerned, we didn't want an intensive development on that site. It was at a major intersection, that's a mess already, it was a mess then, it's even more of a mess now as far as traffic is concerned. So we were very concerned, a group of citizens was put together by John Dolpham to engage the property developer in order to arrive at what we believe a compromised plan for the development. And we did that. So after months and months of negotiation, we came up with this, the city came up with a PMX zoning. The PMX zoning was just tailored to this particular property. And every point in that PMX zoning was a point that was negotiated by the city and by the developer. And what I'm asking you tonight is to live up to that negotiation. It was a contract, it was a contract between the city and a contract between that developer. And we expect that contract to be advised about. So we made concessions, they made concessions, and what do we got now?
That's your three.
That's my three?
Yeah, if you could.
Mr. Bolazina, you've been a steadfast citizen here, take another minute or two if you need to.
Okay, all right. Basically, the original development was not to exceed 311,404 square feet. This proposal, I'm sorry, the original proposal was 309,000, this development is 321,000. It adds 11,000 square feet to the original bargain. The original bargain was chipped into a couple times for increased square footage for this property owner. So the original deal was, I'm gonna have this much square footage, that's a revenue producer. Now they got more, and now they're asking for more. So we don't think it's appropriate, we don't think that the way they're developing it is appropriate. We believe that the original promises that were made in the original development was to engage the city through the pedestrian walkway pattern, to bring people into this development, to let them walk around, to engage the lake, and this development goes against all of the original design principles that the city approved for this project. So that's why we're opposed to it.
Thanks for coming up and talking, now, Mr. Malin Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I come before you tonight to speak in opposition of agenda item number one, which is bill 22-15. As a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I participated in the deliberation of this matter when the application came before the Planning and Zoning Commission back in January. It concluded, as you know, in a seven to two vote to deny the application. I think it's imperative to mention that your zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission takes its role very seriously. And at that meeting, considerable amount of time and attention was devoted to assessing this proposal. And after that discussion, I believe we arrived at a very clear and convincing vote to deny it. Commissioner Bolazina, as you just heard, has given you the history of that site, and he speaks from both his experience on planning and zoning, as well as his degree in architecture and in law. But I think it's important for you all to know that there was a lot of content and rationale provided at that meeting, which is not contained in the packet that you got for preparation for tonight's meeting. And I'll read to you the portion that was provided to you. It reads, "The Planning Commission believes that the extension of Building H into the existing alley will reduce access to the public area around the detention pond." That's accurate, but it states only a small portion of the discussion that took place that night. Tonight, we're hearing from just two members of the Planning Commission. We had planned to have a number of us here tonight, and in fact, Chairman Seema and Commissioners McKnight and Omel wouldn't be here, except two are out of town and one is at home recovering from COVID. Each of those other commissioners are aware of the statements that Commissioner Bolazina and I are making tonight and are fully supportive of the argument that we're presenting to you tonight. So it is not simply Mr. Bolazina and Mr. Malin Smith. As you consider this application, I think it's appropriate to evaluate the proposal against a yardstick. And that yardstick very simply should be, what benefit does this proposal provide to the city? How does this proposal make Town and Country a better place? I will submit that there are three criteria against which this question should be measured as you look at, does this make Town and Country a better place? First is, as a criteria, does it add beautification to our city? And I think there's a non-answer to that. The second measurement or yardstick could be, does it provide services or conveniences, shopping options which are either not present in our city or in short supply in our city? The fact of the matter is, there are six other banks within a single golf shot of where this proposal is being located. Six other banks at that single intersection. So it does not enhance the shopping conveniences or amenities available to our residents. The third area against which you can measure the proposal is, does it generate revenue? The fact is, it's just the opposite. It squanders very valuable retail space that was designed to generate sales tax revenue for our city. And this negates that, because there is no appreciable sales tax stemming from a bank entity. Our duty as a commission, and yours as a board, is to do what is right for the individuals who reside in this city. I go back to my question, does this proposal make Town and Country a better place? And I think it fails consistently on all three of the yardsticks that I proposed, on beautification, additional services, or revenue. So I would ask that you pay close attention to the deliberations of the Planning and Zoning Commission and agree with the conclusion that we reached, which is to deny this proposal. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the board.
Thank you for your time. Open, Alderman.
I wanted to start by thanking our citizens that came to speak tonight so passionately about this subject. I did want to say, as chairman of the Architectural Review Board, that this did pass in that commission. We felt that it did meet the criteria to stick with the design and architecture of that development. So it did pass in that area. I wanted to discuss briefly some of the concerns that were brought up. As I've driven around, as this has been a topic of conversation, and I've been to that shopping center multiple times every week, I used to work in that shopping center, so I understand the foot traffic that's there and the traffic that's there from a usage point of view. Very rarely, on a daily basis, when I'm up there, do I see people walking around and using that. I think it's fantastic that we have that option. I think that I welcome people who want to be physically fit to be able to go and enjoy the space. But we have to remember that that's a development for our city, and I'm extremely appreciative that we have businesses who want to come to Town and Country and place their business in our city. With regards to sales tax revenue, it would be fantastic if every business that wanted to come to our city could be weeded out by solely whether or not they're gonna provide sales tax revenue to our city. We don't have that option. The reason that this is before us is because they want to enlarge the footprint by an amount of 1,500 roughly square feet. If that enlargement was not going to be present, we wouldn't be making a choice of whether or not a bank would be coming into our city. So I think we need to remember that they're looking to stick with the architecture, they're looking to come to our city as a prominent place to be there. Their buildings that they have around St. Louis are very beautiful buildings. They will bring people into our city to do business there as far as a banking service. And will likely, you know, when I go to the store, I'm typically making my stops at multiple stores within that facility, I'm not just going to Target or to Whole Foods or to the salon. So I'm hoping that with increased business and foot traffic to Chase Bank, that we would also have increased foot traffic to some of our other stores that are coming in. So my opinion is that, I think that this is a wonderful opportunity, and I'm appreciative that they want to come to our city.
Thank you. Any woman else? Alderman Holman.
Thank you, Mayor, I just need clarification on the site development plans. And maybe Mr. Stock could answer this as it pertains to page 23 and 24 of the plans.
Okay.
And it has to do with landscaping. Are you ready? Okay.
I'm ready, I don't have page 23 and 24. Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the board. I'm George Stock with Stock and Associates Consulting Engineers. 257 Chesterfield Business Parkway, if I knew, or you need to sign up as a resident, that's 12829 Topple Place Drive. So resident and professional business person, happy to answer any questions.
So my question is, on the black and white renderings in the landscape plan, the plantage are going in front of, I will say, the door opening on Building H, which Chase would go into, along the side of that building, so I will call it the...
East side?
Yeah.
We're gonna bring a couple pictures over to the seat.
Okay, so are you, is that page 23 that you have?
Are you looking for the landscape plan?
So the landscape plan is on a couple pages, it's the black and white rendering, and it shows the 21 planes.
Let me hear this.
Down, look at that.
I just don't know the page numbers, but I brought them.
Okay.
I wonder if she'll be able for everybody?
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Is this the...
Is it page? Probably, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's not a bad one.
Add another subsequent page.
Yeah.
Yes.
So on that first page, when you look down the corridor, you will see that there are... than this picture, okay? And then when you flip to the next page, you'll see on the back of the building, there's actually cut out into the concrete where there are plants in the ground. But when you look at the black and white site plan with the landscaping, that is not indicated on that plan. So not the front of the building, along the corridor and on the backside. Yes.
To the left page. So the least, so landscape plan sheet C 6.4 doesn't show the landscaping that's in the rendering on the page before?
So none of these renderings in black and white represent what is on this page, which is 24 in our packet.
Right, so what, so the original black and white is what was presented to the Planning Commission in an effort to improve the visual of the aspect of some of the concerns that were raised regarding the narrowing. The architect came... were raised regarding the narrowing. The architect came up with new renderings, including landscaping. So what's seen here would be incorporated into the actual final.
So that's what I just wanted on the public record, that what is visually on the color cats is their landscape plan in addition to what's on the black and white rendering.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You might stay there in case people have other questions. I haven't seen twice. Roland Whitman.
George, thanks for coming.
Welcome. Thank you.
Do you know how long the space has been vacant?
I do not. But joining me this evening is Mr. Tim Collier from New York, representative, part of the RPT ownership. And he, do you have a answer to that question?
I know it's been a while because my grandkids are pissed off they can't get ice cream.
Good evening.
Could you tell us how long the place has been vacant?
Sure. So that was Menche's. It vacated in June 2020. There was a food service, which was a frozen yogurt dessert. And we have not been to replace it in ever since. Another point on that is that we're oversubscribed on our food allowance based on lease restrictions that we have to live with. So the replacement cannot be a food tenant and would most likely be a non-sales generating entity in office or service use, just based on the type of space that it is today.
Sure.
Thank you. So you've heard that many would prefer that we keep that space the size that it is and attract a tenant that would fit that space. Can you tell us about the interest you've received from other prospective tenants as relates to that space today and configuration in which it is in?
Sure. We have had no interest in that space since they vacated, other than the opportunity they're looking at now, which is the expansion of that space, just given its proximity within the center, which is where the new tenant would be interested in going. There's other spaces that are available within the center that are not of the size requirement that they're looking for, which is 3,300 square feet.
So to that point, this tenant with use that they have in mind and the business model that they have could not fit within the project within the space as it's configured?
There's no space that we currently have that we could fit them. There's one vacancy that we could fit them in, which is adjacent to REI. Our decision to put them over there would then preclude us from being able to bring in retailers that would actually generate income for the center and for the community. So for example, we have REI. I'm not sure if it looks familiar, but REI is moving along with their build-out. We are hoping to have them open June, July of this year. Adjacent to REI, this is a, you know, very well-respected tenant, well-respected retailer. It has drawn additional interest from other retailers to be there. So Target, as you wrap around over to Whole Foods, is certainly more of a retail destination because of its convenience to the cross-shopping. If we were to relocate and convince Chase to come back to that space, we had dialogue with Chase to go in line. We then lose the ability to do a tenant we're leased with right now called Sephora, which is a high-volume women's...
Women's logistics.
So we could certainly scrap our plans to go retail, convert that over and as a right, do a Chase deal. Chase, they do a great job. Chase Private Client, Chase Bank, they're one of the premier banking institutions in the country. So we're thrilled to have them to come here as well. But it would come at a cost of us not being able to merchandise Chase with them. Some of the other uses, when we came up with our split plans for the leftover Steinbar box, was to do financial Chase and then another service-oriented tenant next to it. Given the demand in our, in our, from my industry of identifying space for retail, we felt that it was better to put them over in the more service and food-focused area. Chase is a low-traffic user in terms of a lot of visits. Chase Private Client, which this would be, certainly caters to a different demographic. So there's a lot of attributes that went into the thought process behind putting them there.
So to that last point, can you elaborate? Just give us a few sentences on what their business model is, because we see Chase, we think bank.
So it is a, it's a bank, but it's also wealth management focused. Do you have plans that show?
I do.
I don't know if there's any in there. It does show that when you go to this, the experience of going here is unlike the past, you know?
Yeah, the hell of a house.
So when you go in here, it's different than even going to a bank like I grew up growing up. Where when you walk in, it's more of a welcome feel. There's a living room, there's some, you know, one-on-one meeting rooms, conference centers. The experience is by design to welcome you from the neighborhood to their space and have, you know, meetings with their constituents or with their business partners who are coming to get counsel about the services that they provide. It's a little bit different than, you know, just the old style of check cashing and operating the way that banks typically would. So it certainly brings a different experience. I also think that, I mean, as you can see from some of these, it just brings a different feel than just being just another institution. I'm familiar with all the different institution, banking institutions that are here. I think some of them have an office component. Some of them have that more traditional format. They probably have a safe that you go in. You can see the safe in the back. This is obviously tighter configuration, and you don't see that same thing here. I think as the world is evolving, we're seeing this, this kind of transformation in banking and finance institutions.
Just a quick question, just from my own education. Under, because of, it's a wealth management type of thing, is what I'm reading, it says that actually is calling for a decrease of about 24 parking spaces in that area. I want to make sure I understand. It says existing 1552 required with addition 1528. So I'm interpreting as say...
I'm going to defer to George on that.
That the actual, the stress for parking actually improves? Is that what that's trying to say?
Here, I hate to interrupt. No, there's actually more parking than what's required today.
Okay.
And so we still are under the required home parking. There's an excess on the side.
I see. So it does, I understand. Just got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Barrow.
Good question. Do you know how many times that particular property has turned over? How many different tenants have been in that property in maybe the last five years?
I'm just trying to think through. So in terms of the overall property, the number of new tenants or the ownership of the property?
Just from one, this one, how many?
The Menches. So I joined here in the company in 2018. I didn't know if it, when it was before Menches. So when I was here, it was Menches. They may have had an assignment right before COVID, where it went from one entity to the next. I don't recall, but I think it was a Menches from what I remember of all along. I don't, I couldn't remember what it was there.
I'm just asking because has there been a lot of turnover in that particular piece of property because of its location in terms of tenants?
I don't, I don't think so. I think that some of the, some of the, that space itself, I don't know. I couldn't tell you other than I know it was a Menches, probably a Menches for the last three to five years up until COVID. And then, and then they just didn't make it. And that's, so were precluded from replacing it with a similar or a like operator. The, whatever it was before, I couldn't tell you the history of that. In terms of the other tenants that are out there, I think most of them were restaurant entities that went here for quite a while. I think first watch may have been the newest addition that came, and that was again before I entered the company.
Alderman Hall.
I have two questions for you. One, I just want to confirm what I think I heard. So is your lease agreement with Sephora secured or is that still in?
It's secured.
Oh, it is secured?
Yes.
And it's going adjacent to REI?
Yes, come on now.
Okay. And then during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, was there a discussion? Did you share the information that Sephora is potentially coming in, but if we don't put Chase in this spot and put it adjacent to REI, Sephora wants?
No, there wasn't an opportunity to have that discussion. I think that was one of the things that was unfortunate. I think it was just one of those things about having the ability to understand more information around them. It would be helpful in the overall collective decision that was around. I think some of that information was relevant in terms of how this, you know, the project that it was, when it was approved, and the world that we're in today, that would change. Retail environment is completely different with a whole host of challenges. So, you know, I completely can appreciate the concerns that come with it. But I think, you know, we're very mindful of this as we go through redevelopment of assets. The last thing we want to do is expand the building if it's not going to make financial sense.
And one last question. I noticed that I only had two. Do you have a recap that you could supply to the city? And I don't need to write this moment in time, but of the 300 and whatever it is now, 20,000 square foot, what percent is retail, what percent is dining, or what percent is service before this legislation?
We could get that for you. Off the top of my head, where 300-ish, you have Realtors' office of 9,000 feet adjacent to this. Most likely replacement is going to be an office that might complement that in some way. So if I were to go around the horn and think about some of the uses that are within there, I think you're around 25,000 to 30,000. So roughly 10% would be my guess off the top of my head. We'll give you the, we can get that information.
Yeah. And I think this is something we should have on file. And I'm sure more things will come forward from this development side that we should be aware of how it is retail, how it is standing, how it is service, to help make these decisions.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Alderman.
Thank you. I appreciate that you did bring up the fact that although the development started as with one vision, we have an ever-changing society and that we have to keep in line with what our residents want and what is going to be used. So I appreciate that comment. There was a statement regarding the traffic congestion. And so I wanted to take a minute to ask Chief Cavens, do we have a high rate of traffic crashes or issues at that intersection? Either of those two stoplights that you see would be related to this development?
The parking lot itself, no, ma'am, we don't. We do have issues on the west entrance to the Town and Country Crossing. It's due to probably lack of appropriate signage for the residents going back, going back in there. But other than that, we...
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Alderman.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of touching base on that real quick. Regardless of what goes in, if the traffic would improve or would increase, I mean, to where it's, I don't, I don't see that that being an issue that this bank would fix or negatively impact. I appreciate the idea of this original Town and Country Crossing. I mean, it's brought a lot to the, well, it's brought a lot to the community. It's done a lot for the community. It's a thriving area. And, you know, I've, I've taken a lot of consideration into, you know, planning and zoning does take a negative or a non-supported approach to something. But I'm, you know, I'm just having a hard time seeing how, given the parking lot on the green space, the number of buildings, the building height, all those will still remain intact. And I think it's, it's an opportunity to, you know, support a property owner that's looking to make a change, to fill, you know, to make sure that the property's filled. I think it's a, I don't see this as a, something that's going to deter or that people even notice, to be quite honest. I could be wrong, but once construction's completed, I don't see this as a negative impact to the city to where people would notice this driving by. And I think, I don't see this as negative to, or disruptive to the community or neighboring property owners. And I think it'd be a good addition to, to, you know, to make sure that the, the tenants are filled and the spots are filled.
Alderman Mortling. And then I think we'll go for a roll call for what happened.
How many, how many groups have owned this, this development?
We're in a third, I believe.
The third. So obviously you inherited what has come before and invited by it and looking at it with overall. This is really not a question, this is just more a statement. First and foremost, we, we have our commissions that are set up to take these matters and, you know, almost serious and take them to a level of concern and especially our planning zoning. We've been through quite a bit in the last couple of years and looking at it. From that standpoint, just looking at the no vote, I'll just give you my initial take is, you know, they're saying deny it, you know, original site plan and looking at it. And I understand that and I respect their opinion. I've walked that facility multiple times. My kids have grown up at that facility when it was just opened. And most of you don't know Eugene's was on the right-hand side. That was my cousin's custard store and there were movies and all sorts of things. And the, the center has changed a lot, in some for the better, some for the same. And one of the things I really appreciate in the center is the revenue it brings to the city as a whole. And as we look at that as a whole and looking at retail changing as a whole, looking at, I'm not really worried about parking, but knowing that we've got some bigger retailers and restaurants there that provide more sales tax for this space. And looking at the big picture of making sure your other tenants are happy there, has taken a lot into my consideration of logic. Because I rarely would say and disagree and look at it from a commission standpoint of, you know, we've got advice from our Planning and Zoning Commission to move that way. So looking at logic, talking with some other people, walking it, I'm really looking at the big picture of the development, what it does for Town and Country, you know, whether adding retail and not taking that sales tax out of that other retail facility and putting Sephora in there. But on top of that, looking really how it's laid out. Restaurants, you've got, you know, big grocery, and you've got, you know, small, small service and boutique and that, and the rest of it on the hillside. And it just doesn't, you know, you're not going to find a small boutique going up there. I would like to, to put upon you and say, how can we make that walkway vibrant again? Right? How can we? It's actually, I was there last night, I was there last week, and there are not many people there. And as a partner originally, they brought on and carried, and they had activities that brought families and communities out to that area. And so as I look at this from a big picture, I'm looking at it from a partnership. I'm looking at this and, you know, this is key. And how do we make this change and make it vibrant and continue on? So...
Yeah, I guess my answer to that would be, you know, understanding what was a driver of success to how it was well-received before and re-engaging that, you know, being a third runner. And maybe some of that was lost in transitional one orders and that. And not having that familiarity. We do have an RPT employee that works here in the community. So she's based here and her engagement, and I think that's something that can be, you know, I can't say they would have an easy turnaround and all of a sudden it's going to be a robust driver of activity. But we could certainly be engaged to understand how it was done before and maybe replicate that or understand how it might be applied now.
And this is my last comment. I'd rather have to see the center full, even though Chase is financial and it's banking, it's not providing the sales tax. I'd rather see it full and vibrant, that people want to go by and drive by and they know it's a development they want to go to. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I did something to say briefly. But first, I'd like to thank our commissioners. I think it brought life to the decision-making process. And that commission works as hard, if not harder than any commission in this city. So I appreciate your being and having your thoughts and your state. And I'd go on to say other things that citizens have said to me about this, you know, that the aesthetic will be impaired. This is not going to be the same. You're making the building bigger, you're changing the siding around, but it's not the same plan. If it were the right plan, you had designed it that way to begin, right? So it's not going to be... So it's not going to be the same. The opening's going to be reduced, you're going to pull out trees, you're going to put some planters where the trees work. Not as good in my lip book, but you know, it's better than nothing. The footprint of the building will be enlarged. It's not an enormous change this time, but it will be bigger. So in the end, it's, you know, I think we're going backward from a design aesthetic and so forth. But like Brian, I, you know, we have to recognize this is a business. And I think if we share responsibility with you for making sure that we do things that make sense for your business. To a certain extent, you backed yourself into a corner with some of these lease covenants that you've signed around food and so forth, right? So you've kind of gotten yourself in a tough spot with that.
I heard it.
But it is what it is. Pardon?
You can hear it.
I can hear it, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Not you, your former brothers. But, you know, to the note that came in the packet, you know, that we were said, you said that, you know, this project supports goal 4.3, that we ensure that the existing commercial centers are sustainable and responsive to a changing economy. A lot of testimony I think are heard tonight kind of lines up with that. We talked about the fact that Chase is only interested in this space if there's an exchange. We talked about the fact that Chase is new to town, they're making a lot of investments in town. Hopefully they'll be a stable tenant for several years. I didn't ask, I don't want to know what your contract is with them, but hopefully they'll be here for a while. It does open other spaces for higher tax revenue-producing stores to enter. And the parking thing, we keep kind of going around in circles. And parking up in that area is generally terrible, everybody would say. You know, if you want to go here, you got to park there. If you want to go there, you got to park here. And we're walking all over the place. So we're going to add some more volume here, but you know, that's what makes spaces fill up is people, and that's the unfortunate reality of the whole thing. So that's the end there. That was as quick as I could get.
Well, for you, it was great. I would ask the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Alderman Even?
Aye.
Alderman Holman?
Aye.
Alderman Wizan?
Aye.
Alderman Perot?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye.
Alderman Mortland?
Aye.
And Alderman Whitmire?
Aye.
The bill passes unanimously and becomes ordinance number 4503.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, read the agenda item, Architecture Review, continued from 2/28, 3/14, and 3/28. Town and Country Crossing, 1,01272, Town and Country Drive. Seek a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, Bill number 22 dash 23, Board as a whole, without objection, with the city clerk, read the bill for the second time.
Bill number 2223 is an ordinance accepting the bid of Traffic Control Company for the 2022 pavement striping program and authorizing an agreement for sale.
Seek a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion or amendment on that? Would ask the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Alderman Holman?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye.
Alderman Whitmire?
Aye.
Alderman Mortland?
Aye.
Alderman Even?
Aye.
Alderman Wizan?
Aye.
And Alderman Perot?
Aye.
The bill passes unanimously and becomes ordinance number 4504.
Thank you. We're going on a new business, Bill number 22 dash 24. I believe Alderman Even would want to sponsor this bill.
Alderman Holman.
And Alderman Holman and Hughes, all right? Perfect. Without objection, with the city clerk, read the bill for the first time.
Bill number 2224 is an ordinance approving unconditional use and authorizing a conditional use permit for an accessory structure, a pergola, located at 824 Amhergan Drive in the city of Town and Country.
Bill number 2224 is continued to the meeting on Monday, April 25, 2022, for the second reading and consideration. Number five, Bill number 22 dash 25, I would seek to sponsor for the bill, I believe it would be probably Alderman Even.
Yes.
Without objection, with the city clerk, read the bill for the first time.
Bill number 2225 is an ordinance approving a conditional use and authorizing a conditional use permit for an accessory structure, a residential driveway gate located at 2019 South Mason Road in the city of Town and Country.
Bill number 2225 is continued to the meeting on Monday, April 25, 2022, for the second reading and consideration. Number six, Bill number 22 dash 26, I believe sponsored by Alderman Mortland.
I'd like to sponsor it too, Mayor.
And Alderman Holman, and without objection.
And I would too.
And Alderman Allen. Without objection, with the city clerk, read the bill for the first time.
Bill number 2226 is an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 210 of offenses of the Municipal Code of the City of Town and Country, specifically by the amendment of Section 210.1030 regarding tampering.
Bill number 22 dash 26 is continued to the meeting on Monday, April 25, 2022, for the second reading and consideration. Next, an approval of a purchase order to Moccans Ford for two Ford Police Interceptor utility explores in the amount of $70,450. I seek a motion to approve?
So moved.
Go for the board as a whole. And any discussion on that? Please, yeah.
So Chief Cavens, would you mind just kind of going through the background on what happened?
Sir. Mr. Mayor, Board, as it stated in my memo I submitted to all of you, we received information from Landmark Dodge Chrysler that Dodge themselves canceled 9,000 fleet orders. And part of that 9,000 fleet orders was R2 that I brought to the board in January. Because we, because of the supply chain issues, we had to provide the state contractor with a approval notice that we had received approval as well as a letter of intent. Well, they canceled that. Lieutenant Walker did his due diligence, was able to find that there are some Ford Explorer police packages available through Moccans, but we have to go through the same process with them, provide them proof of board approval as well as a letter of intent. I know I'm on public record indicating that we weren't going to buy Ford interceptors anymore because the Durangels were a hit with all of the officers and they were cheaper than the interceptors. However, if we don't do anything this year, if we don't get new vehicles this year and continue our cycle and our fleet management, it will take a significant, it will have a significant effect on our fleet management program and a significant impact on upcoming budgets. So this is, and it's actually, they're actually a little bit cheaper than the Durangels.
Chief.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Whitmire, sorry.
He's doing this on purpose, Mayor.
No, Chief, how can we assure the public that we're getting the lowest price for these cars again?
They're state contract vehicles. And as I mentioned, these are six cylinders, which I'm not, not the biggest fan of. But again, they're cheaper, they're state contract, they've come up about $1,200, $1,500 less than the actual Durangels were going to be. But yeah, they're on state contract.
Thank you, Chief. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eight, Bill number 22 dash 27, I suspect Alderman would sponsor this bill?
Yes.
In a second, Alderman Hughes, without objection, with the city clerk, read the bill for the first time.
Bill number 2227 is an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 125, Boards, Commissions, and Committees of the Town and Country Municipal Code, specifically by the deletion of Section 125.270 regarding the beautification grant program and the amendment of Section 125.250 regarding related duties.
Thank you. Bill number 22 dash 27 is continued to the meeting on Monday, April 25, 2022, for the second reading and consideration. Next, we come upon the work list, and it's in $171,561.94. I seek a motion to approve?
So moved.
And second, over否, thank you. Any discussion or amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Other business, very briefly. I'm not completely sure if the election and how people are sworn in. If Alderman Whitmire will be at the next meeting, I think he will be. But in case he is not, I wanted to go on record as saying that it's been my pleasure to work with Alderman Whitmire these, this year that I've been mayor. He's extremely thoughtful, is willing to look at issues from both sides. And he does his due diligence. And I want to, I am sure that we will have a great representative in Michelle Francisco coming on board, but I will miss his thoughtful preparation and thoughts mostly for these meetings. So Jeff, I will, I will miss him ahead of you here. Agreed. Thank you.
I will just say it's been my pleasure and my honor.
Alderman Even.
Thank you. I wanted to take a moment to say thank you to Chief Cavens. He arranged for me to do a ride-along with Corporal Dobson on Saturday, April 2nd. And I chose the evening slot thinking it would be a really great opportunity to see some interesting things. And that I did. It was quite interesting. So interesting, in fact, that I decided to stay on a little bit later than what was originally planned. I wanted to say that I was so pleasantly pleased with the level of professionalism that Corporal Dobson expressed that night. He is just an amazing officer. Every traffic stop that he had, he was very calm and cooperative and considerate of the citizens that he interacted with. He gave me a level of understanding that I didn't have prior to this ride-along for just the, the things they do on a day-to-day basis. I think that as a citizen, we probably have our own thoughts of what those interactions might be like. And one of the most enlightening things was sitting on the side of Highway 40 around 10 o'clock at night for a traffic stop for someone that was speeding and watching him get out of the car very calmly and walk up to a car as there were plenty of vehicles speeding by. How will he doing the speed limit? It's a very scary experience. And I think that we take for granted what our men and women do on a day-to-day basis for something as simple as a traffic stop. So he was a fantastic host. I encourage anyone that has not done a ride-along to reach out to Chief Cavens and sign up to participate in that. The other thing that I wanted to say is it was really neat to watch him interact with the rest of the officers that were on duty that night. He and Sergeant Moore and Officer O'Brien had a level of teamwork that they could look at each other and really understand what each other was thinking. It was pretty amazing. So I'm proud to have them as a citizen. I'm proud to have them as an Alderman. And I appreciate that you gave us that opportunity to be able to see things from a different point of view.
Anytime, thank you.
I appreciate those comments because when I was a kid, a very long time ago, you never, if a policeman pulls someone over, nobody ever pulled a gun out and shot the policeman, things like that. I mean, those things were not even on the radar of school. They're on the radar of school now. So even the smallest tiny infraction, you know, doing 35, 30 or whatever, you have to have some degree of trepidation when you walk up to that car if you're a officer. I mean, you really do. And that's, that's new. That didn't exist when I was a kid.
That was an experience that definitely was a possibility on that night. And so it was really nice to see the level of professionalism that they carry each and every time I saw them walk up to the situation.
Exactly, I mean, you, go.
I'm sorry, did we do that?
Go ahead.
There is citizen police academies that our officers do, are part of. And I've done this twice over the last, I don't know, 10 or 15 years. And it's an amazing experience. And I think anyone benefits each time you go to it. And I think there was just, maybe there's one wrapping up.
It's just, they just have one episode.
But they keep coming. So I encourage anyone to attend one. And you won't see things the same way afterwards.
I agree. Alderman Holman.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Whitmire, I will miss you very much. And I'm still keeping your phone number on screen dial. You'll be hearing from me. But I do have a couple of items that I wanted to bring up before we depart tonight. Is our city administrator coming back? He is not, okay. So our city just went through a little surprise on the ballot. I know it was a surprise for me when I saw a prop fee on our ballot. And I, and I want to make sure that we do our part working with St. Louis County Parks Division and the county council moving forward as they look to fill maybe some type of agreement for that Jarville House that we have a seat at the table on part of that discussion. I don't know if that's with our Parks and Director. I don't know if that's with our city administrator. I don't know who that is assigned to, but I think we have to have all hands on deck being, and having that seat at the table as they move forward because they're clearly going to try again. So that was, that was one thing that I wanted to bring up to just make sure that we stay on top of as a city. And then, you know, Prop U failed, I think 11 out of the 26 municipalities passed it. I hope that we continue in our municipality to continue to talk about it, Ways and Means continues to talk about it. Maybe we talk about it at our retreat. And if we decide to go forward and support and put this back on the ballot, we talk about forums or coffees or what have you to get our residents a couple of times with places where they can come to find that information in addition to a mail or that they receive from the mail so they can ask, communicate with human beings and not information that's on the internet or a piece of paper in their hand. So I would just request that of us as we move closer to our retreat, that we consider that. And that, oh, and then Town Square. Mr. Switzer, there are three dead trees in the parking lot between the parking lot and the adjacent property. There's a strip of land there and there are three, I don't know if they're arborites or what they are. They're dead, so if you could just notify either Love or Brinkman, I don't know who owns those, or maybe they're ours.
You want to go on a planning ritual?
Yes. So if you could notify the appropriate party that does the flip down. And it's April, so it's a perfect time to do it. Okay? That is all I have.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alderman Hughes.
I just want to go on the record as saying I will miss Alderman Whitmire. Your time, talent, and expertise and your very insightful questions will be missed. So it's been a pleasure working with you.
And I just wanted to reiterate what Alderman Holman said regarding Queenie Park and the Jarville House. Alderman Wizan and I received quite a few emails and phone calls regarding that situation by residents who were extremely surprised and asking for clarification from us, in which we in turn had to try to field some of those questions and then refer them on to the appropriate councilman to answer those as well.
You know, I was actually amazed that it didn't pass just because I thought there's tons of people who live in Town and Country who voted on it, like 95% of the voting public. And I thought they think what they have, why not? So I was actually surprised it failed. Alderman Mortland.
I thought there'd be a passing of the guard for maybe next, next meeting, but I just want to say thanks to my board, Alderman. Thank you for, I'm going to echo the mayor's comments. Thank you for your preparation, your commitment. You're all in, you're always in, all in. I really appreciate it. And you did educate me along the way and certain things, but I just, for our board, you took care of it. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Alderman Allen.
I'll just piggyback on, and I, he and I talked. And when I heard he wasn't going to continue, I was sad. And I know Ms. Francisco will do a great job. But Alderman Whitmire said he's not going anywhere, so I hope we'll see him around.
I'm not dying.
Actually, I think we've overdone this budget.
Yeah, next time, we're not doing anything now.
I was going to be the only one saying goodbye, so.
I seek a motion to adjourn this. The second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for all your good efforts.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.